Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, November 3rd. Deputy City Clerk, please call the role.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
Councilmembers Verko Guditsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
Mayor Newsom?
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the deputy city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Tonight's item, a study session, Reach Codes for Cooling Upgrades and Planned Home Renovations 2025 Code Cycle informational. The presentation will be Andrea Chow, our sustainability analyst. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, City Council members and members of the public. I'm the Sustainability Analyst with the City of San Mateo and I'm accompanied tonight by Blake Herschaff from Peninsula Clean Energy and Taylor Taylor from TRC and I want to give a moment to them to allow them to introduce themselves.
Hi, City Council. Blake Herschaff, I'm a Senior Programs Engineer with Peninsula Clean Energy. I manage our Reach Codes program and have been involved in that since 2019. I also have a background in building systems design, so any questions technically about plumbing or HVAC systems, I can help answer as well as questions about Peninsula Clean Energy programs. When it comes to technical questions about the Reach Codes, our consultant for that program has been TRC since program onset. So I'll let Taylor introduce herself.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Counsel. My name is Taylor Taylor. I work for TRC, which is an environmental consulting company. I am an engineer and a managing research consultant where I specialize in building Reach Codes. So happy to answer any questions about the design of the model Reach Codes.
I will be leading tonight's presentation, but they'll be able to respond to any technical questions you might have about the Reach Codes. Staff's recommendation this evening, we'll ask City Council for direction on the Reach Code options for cooling upgrades and home renovations for the 2025 code cycle. I'll start with some background on Reach Codes. We'll dive into Reach Code options in detail and also review community and stakeholder engagement as well as a recommendation from our Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. The California Building Standards Code standardizes the construction of residential and non-residential buildings in California. Local amendments to the state code as related to sustainability and energy efficiency are known as Reach Codes as they reach above the state's requirements. We're headed into the new code cycle beginning January 1, 2026. And the state's building code is typically updated every three years with every local jurisdiction in California needing to adopt that new building code. Our currently adopted Reach Codes will expire on December 31st, 2025. Thus, this is typically the timeframe that jurisdictions are evaluating Reach Codes for the upcoming code cycle. Putting this into the context of the city, the city has a climate action plan with ambitious targets for greenhouse gas emissions reductions and addressing energy use and emissions from buildings is critical because GHG emissions in our inventory shows that buildings, both residential and non-residential, account for 38% of our community-wide emissions. Reach Codes are a policy tool that allows local governments to be leaders in climate solutions and the City of San Mateo has a strong history of adopting Reach Codes to meet climate goals. The city first adopted Reach Codes in 2015 and has explored the development and implementation ever since. The city's Electrify San Mateo Sustainable Building Strategy was recently completed, directing staff to pursue an electric first policy for all facilities and that is still essential and a priority to city to city work and will build off the city's recent facilities assessment that was presented to City Council very recently. Also, as part of this effort, City Council directed staff to develop new construction Reach Codes. This is not part of today's presentation because cost-effectiveness studies are not yet available for new construction, but they are anticipated for 2026. For Reach Codes for Renovation, City Council directed staff to do broad community outreach and that has been the focus of these past months. The Bay Area Reach Codes Collaboration is a collaborative group supporting local jurisdictions in the adoption of Reach Codes. Peninsula Clean Energy through this group provides model ordinances and technical support to jurisdictions looking to evaluate Reach Codes. Through this, they provide technical support like through TRC in supporting Reach Codes engagement with their stakeholders and with the broader community. These model codes and resources make it easier for city staff to evaluate and explore Reach Codes and they also help with adding consistency of Reach Codes across jurisdiction boundaries. Tonight, you will hear about four Reach Code options. City Council could recommend any number of these options. Each of the options could be adopted as a standalone Reach Code ordinance. While my presentation of these four options will be brief and high level, know that there is thoughtful technical analysis as well as cost-effectiveness studies to validate these Reach Codes. In contrast to the Electrify San Mateo effort that reviewed broad policy areas to electrify existing buildings and evaluated whole home electrification costs, the Reach Code options hone in on specific project opportunities to encourage building electrification and energy efficiency work when work is already being pursued by a property owner. Planning for major renovations or an air conditioning installation involves planning for the financing of that project and identifying a contractor or even a contractor team to go through this major change. There are major investments that are, these are major investments that are the ideal time to consider additional measures that benefit the environment and home comfort. These Reach Codes before you do not ban the use of gas appliances and they do not require immediate equipment replacement. Instead, they focus on elective intervention points to encourage energy efficiency or add infrastructure. I want to start with cooling upgrades are option one. When a property owner opts to install a new or replaced replacement air conditioner in a single-family home duplex or townhome, they can comply with this Reach Code by either installing a heat pump with no additional requirements or installing an air conditioning unit with some extra efficiency improvements. What is a heat pump? A heat pump is almost the same equipment as an air conditioner. While an air conditioner takes heat from inside your home and transfers it outside, a heat pump operates in the same way except it also allows for the reverse. So a heat pump provides both space heating and space cooling. This Reach Code does not impact gas furnace replacements, just air conditioning, new air conditioning units and replacement air conditioning units. I also wanted to put this into the context of the Bay Area Air District's Zero NOx rules that require gas furnace replacements to be zero NOx beginning in 2029. In terms of upfront costs, heat pumps can cost $1,000 to $3,000 more than air conditioner units. Rebates help cover this gap and are not included in the cost effectiveness analysis that is used to validate these Reach Codes. Because a heat pump is highly efficient, that heat pump saves property owners $200 to $400 per year on bill, so on your utility bills compared to a traditional air conditioner. And when you install a heat pump, you're then having only to replace and maintain one piece of equipment instead of two. On the topic of rebates, PCE offers $1,500 for heat pump replacements. They also have a $2,500 heat pump water heater rebate as well as a $10,000 zero percent loan program. In addition, a homeowner who is a CARE or FARA customer is eligible for an additional rebate on a heat pump and they also, Peninsula Clean Energy offers a full-service turnkey program for income-eligible residents which offers no-cost electrification upgrades. These are important resources in home electrification specifically for heat pumps. For each of the Reach Code options, I'm going to try to estimate the potential impact this can have in our community and we tried to do that by looking at three years of mechanical permit data and mechanical permits include gas furnace replacements, air conditioner installations, as well as heat pump installations for residential and non-residential buildings. So what we saw was an average of 328 permits per year amongst all building types and the majority of those permits were for single-family homes duplexes and townhomes. We estimate like 85% of that total number. The data set revealed that there was an average of 216 heat pumps installed per year and on average 20 to 40 standard air conditioning units installed per year. So what we're seeing is a large number of projects voluntarily installing heat pumps. Still, this Reach Code policy would ensure that property owners would consider the benefits of a heat pump at the time of AC installation. In 2023, the City of San Mateo had implemented a heat pump Reach Code requirement during air conditioning installations. This heat pump requirement was paused and then later repealed due to a federal court case. But I want to clarify that this option before you is different than what was previously implemented at the city. This Reach Code option allows for multiple pathways to comply. There is an estimated 257 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year associated with the implementation of this Reach Code. And this Reach Code approach has been adopted by the cities of Palo Alto, Menlo Park, Mountain View and Sunnyvale and currently is under review by other area cities. Option two for non-residential buildings is very similar to option one. When a property owner opts to install a new or replacement air conditioning unit between five and 20 tons in a non-residential building, they can meet the Reach Code requirement by either installing a heat pump with no additional state, with no additional efficiency requirements or install a single-zone air conditioner and also install a heat recovery ventilator. Considering a range of building types of different ages, there is actually a marginal cost savings with the installation of a heat pump compared to an average single-zone air conditioner. And looking at that same data set of mechanical permits, we're estimating less than 15% of those permits would be attributed to non-residential buildings. I want to note that multifamily buildings were included in the data set, were not included in either of these Reach Code options. This Reach Code would equate to a GHG reduction impact of 427 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year. And the cost-effectiveness study in Model Reach Code was very recently developed and published and so it has not yet been adopted by other jurisdictions. Moving to our option three, Flex Path for Single Family Homes duplexes and Townhomes. This Reach Code requires alteration and addition projects of a certain size or dollar valuation to install energy improvements from a menu of measures to achieve a target score. The types of projects this would impact would be elective major residential renovations that may include plumbing, electrical and electrical work and appliance upgrades. Applicants of these types of project typically already have an architect, engineer and energy code compliance expert on their design team to help facilitate compliance or that could help facilitate compliance with the Flex Path Reach Code. This Reach Code would not apply to routine repairs and maintenance, roof or window-only projects or ADUs. The ordinance language would also include economic hardship and technical and feasibility exceptions. If the City Council is interested in this Reach Code approach, staff would need direction on defining a covered project as well as establishing a target score. The easiest way to talk about this Reach Code approach is to talk through an example project. So in this example, a homeowner is taking on a major renovation of a kitchen and living room equating to 1,000 square feet and this major renovation is occurring in a single-family home that does not have air conditioning. Using a $500 per square foot cost estimate, this project construction total is estimated at $500,000. On the right side of the slide, we have a menu of measures table which shows the points associated with each measure. These point values in the table are based off the cost-effectiveness studies and point values are directly tied and calculated based on their energy savings. So let's say in this example, this Flex Path ordinance has a target score of 18. The applicant could meet the target score of 18 by either installing a heat pump or as shown in Compliance Path 2 with the blue rose, they could meet that target score of 18 using a combination of efficiency measures including air sealing, attic insulation, windows and ducts and duct ceiling. Project applicants would also receive credit for any measures that were already installed in their home. So this Reach Code is named Flex Path because of the flexible nature of the Reach Code and so hopefully this demonstrates how applicants have the flexibility to choose the pathway for compliance based on their own scope of work and their priorities. So I mentioned there are two aspects of this Reach Code policy that requires City Council direction. First, that definition of a covered project which could be defined by dollar evaluation or square footage. Staff does recommend using square footage because dollar valuation is self-reported and could result in some challenging compliance issues. Staff arrived at 1,000 square feet as an example threshold because this is a very significant home renovation. And also through a very rough preliminary scan of permit data using 1,000 square feet as threshold appeared to impact maybe 80 to 100 projects per year. A deeper dive into the permit data shows that if you lower that threshold, let's say to 500 square feet, you would be able to capture probably double that amount of projects. And then if you landed somewhere at 750 square feet, that would be somewhere in between there. This Reach Code has an estimated impact of 730 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per year. And then I also shared on the slide some example Flex Path ordinances to to share how other cities have decided to implement Flex Path. So Menlo Park has a dollar valuation, $100,000 or more and projects are required to select two measures. And Santa Cruz, their square footage threshold is 350 square feet or greater and projects are required to achieve a target score of nine. And then Palo Alto uses 1,000 square feet as their project threshold with a target score of 12. So in the previous slide, I reviewed a compliance target of 18. Staff is looking for council direction on what that target score should be. So to illustrate this, I'll also show a target score of 12 and a target score of 30. Things to consider about setting a target score is the number of cost-effective compliance pathways. And with more compliance pathways, there is more flexibility for the property owner to comply. For a target score of 18, there are at least three cost-effective pathways identified in TRC's very preliminary reveal. So this slide shows the, using the same project example, shows the project meeting a target score of 12. The applicant can comply by installing a heat pump hot water heater or using a combination again of various efficiency measures. For a target score of 12, there are at least four cost-effective pathways identified. And then for a target score of 30, a homeowner can meet the target score by installing both a heat pump and a heat pump hot water heater. And then you can see that the compliance pathway to using only efficiency measures, the project applicant would have to do a large combination of efficiency measures to meet that target score of 30. The target score of 30 would provide the least flexibility for the project applicant but would drive at the most energy savings. And for a target score of 30, there was only one cost-effective compliance pathway identified. And so that concludes the discussion on Flex Path. I have one more Reach Code for your consideration and that has to do with electric readiness for single-family homes duplexes and townhomes. This Reach Code looks to add electrical infrastructure at a convenient, low-cost time when electrical work is already happening in specific renovations. So what it looks to do is to ensure homeowners and property owners can choose and opt into electric replacements later if the, and so that electrical work is not that barrier. And so what it would require is that specific alterations and additions that are happening within three feet of specific gas appliances require some level of electric infrastructure be installed. This Reach Code option would really expand on what the city has already adopted which applies to kitchen and laundry area renovations, installing a electrical infrastructure during, at that time and would expand to apply to water heaters and outdoor appliances. Permit data was not available for this particular Reach Code approach and neither was quantifiable GHG emissions. But this is an important future-proofing opportunity that could save the property owner in the long term. And Menlo Park, Mountain View and Sunnyvale have also adopted similar electric readiness requirements. Following City Council's directions, staff prioritized broad community engagement and hosted three community meetings, one virtual and two in-person. At staff-promoted, community events tried to reach out to the Daily Journal and post flyers in libraries and recreation centers in addition to using our typical online channels and effort to reach a broader audience. The two in-person events, one was hosted at the main library and the other at the Bayside Academy. And for the in-person events, they were mostly attendees who were very supportive of Reach Codes and wanted to ask very specific questions related to Reach Code implementation. The virtual meeting received very mixed feedback, but it was very challenging. It did not include a lot of dialogue, but that's just due to the nature of a virtual and webinar format. In addition, staff reached out to HVAC contractors and general contractors and engineers and architects on these Reach Code options. Specific to the cooling upgrades requirements, we hosted a virtual webinar for contractors and for people attended. In general, the feedback we received was that attendees understood the purpose of the proposed Reach Codes and shared that they had seen an increase of installation of heat pump HVAC over these past years. Some written feedback that we received was that he, that customers are motivated to purchase heat pumps now and so that contractor did not see the need for additional requirements beyond the state. I also wanted to share that staff reviewed interior remodel permits from the year 2025 and did not see duplicate names of project contacts. So this permit data just reflects the diversity in contractors that are doing work throughout the city as well as the tendency of this type of permit to be pulled by the property owner themselves. And so for Flex Path specifically, broad community engagement was the way we tried to reach out to people intending to do a major remodel on their home. At the October 8th Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission, staff presented a very similar report requesting commission feedback on these four options and commissioners were supportive of all four Reach Code options. Specific to Reach Code options one and two, cooling upgrades, they talked about the importance of rebate availability to aid in heat pump transitions. And for Flex Path, commissioners recommended a project threshold of 1,000 square feet or greater. There was some discussion about how that might be a good starting point, but with some commissioners recommending a lower square footage threshold somewhere around 700 or 750 square feet as that would capture more projects. For the Flex Path, target score commissioners were concerned that a target score of 30 would be too rigid, but there was mixed support for both a target score of 12 and 18. And that concludes my presentation tonight. The direction staff is looking for is on the four Reach Code options for cooling upgrades and planned home renovations. If the City Council directs staff to pursue any of these four Reach Code options, staff would develop a Reach Code ordinance. After ordinance introduction and adoption, Reach Codes need to be filed and approved by the California Energy Commission and Building Standards Commission before they can be enforced and that filing and approval can take four months. So in closing, I'll show the four Reach Code options and the areas that require feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, for a very thorough presentation. I liked it so much, I watched it twice. Before we open it up to the council, let's open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, how many people are online and how many people do we want to have speaking in-house?
If you do wish to speak on
If you do wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. And if you join us in person, please provide me with your request to speak form. Can I give it a couple seconds? Okay. We will now be closing the request to speak period and announcing the name of our speakers. We have 10 requests to speak on this item. And per our rules and procedures, that will set the time limit to three minutes. We're going to start with an organized presentation and followed by individual speakers. When I call your name, please stand on my right side so then we can move a little bit faster. All righty, we're going to start with an organized presentation with Robert Whitehair, Natalie Diaz, and Michelle Hudson.
Thank you. Ready? Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to help implement the council's objective: Establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate methane gas used by 2030. I am Robert Whitehair. I'm joined tonight by Michelle Hudson and Natalie Diaz, who are here to recommend to the council direct staff to move forward with all four options.
Next slide. All right. Hi, my name is Natalie, and I'm a high schooler. But today I'm speaking on behalf of 350 Silicon Valley and the San Mateo Climate Action Team. And we're a group of young adults and community members who open up our homes to share electrification knowledge. And on this, we like to speak about reach codes and promote them because I and we all think that it's a great measure for our community. And this is because right now is the best time to take action. Every year, more greenhouse gases keep getting emitted into the environment, and especially for San Mateo, rising sea levels, rising heat levels, and especially with my friend's asthma is very prevalent. And I think these are all issues that need to be addressed. And I'm really hoping that when I grow up, I'll be able to come back to San Mateo and really be able to live here in a safe community and healthy community. So that's why I'm supporting reach codes, and I think this is a great time to act on it. I'd like to pass it off to Michelle to talk more about our community. Next slide, please.
Next slide, please. Thanks, Natalie, and good evening, Council. We support all four proposed reach codes, and we think now is the right time to adopt these codes. For one, we've got momentum. San Mateo is admired as a climate leader, and we've earned that position because of what our city has done on climate, including the city's previous adoption of reach codes for existing buildings. We're also very fortunate to have PCE. They provide clean electric energy and can handle future electric loads. PCE also offers a wide range of assistance to income-qualified and market-ready customers. To top it off, the cost of electric replacements is approaching parity with gas replacements and will continue to do so even as the federal rebates go away. In short, the stars are aligned to adopt the proposed reach codes. Next slide, please. So why else should the reach code options be adopted now? For one, only homes with planned renovations are affected. In addition, a property owner is not mandated to install electric appliances. They have the option to complete other energy-reducing upgrades. But if a property owner does opt for electric replacements, they can achieve significant reductions in greenhouse gases. Next slide, please. Adoption of the proposed reach codes would result in the greenhouse gas reductions shown on this slide. These reductions are needed for the climate and their necessary start toward achieving our Climate Action Plan goals. Now I'll turn it over to Robert.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Natalie. Next slide, please. So you have four options before you, and you've had them very well described by your consultant and by city staff. We thank everybody who's dealing with this very complicated issue. We support all four as the San Mateo Climate Action Team and Silicon Valley 350. Next slide, please. The time when an air conditioning fails is a great time to install a heat pump. That's the time to do it, not to do it 10 years later when you have to install it again, but to do it right then when it installs. So that's why we're saying that this opportunity is here for us now. Next slide, please. Same is true for non-residential buildings. Those buildings and those air conditioning units don't go out very often, but when they do go out, that's the time to replace the air conditioning unit with a heat pump. We're also asking that you consider making that upper limit 20 tons. State code already requires five-ton replacement, and we're asking to be ramped up to 20 tons. Next slide, please. FlexPath, in order to have more homes impacted, you know, the lower the standard on square footage and the higher the points, the more the homes that will be impacted. That's why we're asking for a score of 30. We know that's a very aggressive standard, but we know that also will result in more reduction of greenhouse gases. We're also asking that the square footage be set at 500, similar to what other cities are doing, because that will also increase the number of homes that are involved. And I'm about running out of time. So we're for option four as well. And next slide, please. And just, you know that PCE already has some really good programs available. We're just asking our residents to take advantage of them. Last slide, please. And not to forget the renters, there's plenty that renters can get from PCE.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All righty, our next three speakers, I'm going to call your name, and when I do so, please line up on my right. Our next speaker will be Wendy Cho, followed by Brian Schmidt and Michael Reagan.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, council members, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Wendy Cho, and I'm commenting today both as a resident of San Mateo and also as a staff member at ACTERA, Action for a Healthy Planet, which is a nonprofit based here in the peninsula where we've been serving and supporting communities for 55 years. Our mission is to bring people together to create local solutions for a healthy planet. And I think reach codes are a wonderful example of a local solution for the healthy planet. ACTERA supports the four reach codes proposed for discussion tonight. One of our roles is that we provide free information, resources, and one-on-one consultations for residents, faith groups, and small businesses on various sustainable practices. And we create opportunities for beneficial electrification for all because everyone deserves to get the benefits of electrification regardless of income. What are these benefits? One big benefit of building electrification is better air quality in and outside the building. This is really good news for people who suffer from asthma and also for people prone to respiratory illness, such as the elderly or children, as mentioned by one of the previous speakers. A second benefit is that you can acquire local incentives and rebates to lower the out-of-pocket cost of electrification and put it more within your budget. A third benefit, excuse me, a third benefit is higher energy efficiency, meaning that it saves you money on your monthly bills. And heat pumps are really, really, really efficient. Electrification can be beneficial for commercial buildings, too. We need multiple kinds of solutions, and non-residential codes can help us unlock another type of innovation for beneficial electrification. To sum up, these building codes reflect common sense. It's very clear which cases these codes would apply. They actually save money on net when you consider the ongoing energy bills, and owners are given flexible options on how to get to the goal. Finally, San Mateo isn't going it alone. These proposals were developed with trusted experts at Peninsula Clean Energy and Silicon Valley Clean Energy, who are experts in this. Our local CCA, Peninsula Clean Energy, has been able to bring clean energy to our community. And so tapping into this clean electricity is key for meeting our city's climate goals. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Schmidt.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Schmidt from Menlo Park. Menlo Park works on climate change issues, supporting strong policies in jurisdictions throughout San Mateo County, the broader region, with a special focus on Menlo Park as well. But I'm happy to be here tonight. We support all four of the recommended options for reach codes and in particular support the recommendations you just heard from the San Mateo Climate Action Team regarding those recommendations. I wanted to start by discussing non-residential cooling options. While there aren't other jurisdictions that have done those so far, I can tell you that Menlo Park, the staff is planning to bring those to the city council later this year or sometime in early 2026. So while you may very well be the first to do something on that, I can guarantee you you will not be alone, and it would be great to get your leadership on this issue. Two things I wanted to particularly emphasize was the Bay Area Air District regulations, how this intersects with those, and Peninsula Clean Energy rebates. The Bay Area Air District regulations are basically going to make it impossible to do new installations of gas water heaters in 2027 and gas furnaces in 2029. So if the air conditioning, cooling options are put into place and you have heat pumps installed prior to that, say someone's air conditioning fails between now and 2029, you replace it with a heat pump, and then their furnace fails, they're already set. What if you don't do this rule and they replace air conditioner with another air conditioner? And then their heat pump fails, pardon, sorry, then their furnace fails in 2029, they're going to have to put in yet another heat pump in there. So they would have an air conditioner and a heat pump when they only needed one of those things. So it fits, works well with the Bay Area District regulations to have these cooling options in place by your reach codes. And I'd say even on a broader scope, the Bay Area Air District regulations are crucial to the state of California, providing leadership throughout the state. Southern California is looking at those and the state as a whole. So having those regulations moved forward are key. And then, and then supporting that through these reach codes will be helpful as well. And finally, the Peninsula Clean Energy rebates that were posted earlier, it's important to keep those in mind that those rebates exist now when these actions are not required by the air district and relatively smaller numbers instead of everybody are doing these installations. In several years in the future, it will be mandatory to do these installations, and there'll be a lot more doing it. In that circumstance, I'm not sure that the scaled rebates that are currently in place will be in place in the future. So this is a good time to have these reach codes in place. It can save people money by taking advantage of these rebates that might not be available at a later point. So for all these reasons, it's important to move forward on these things. It's important to deal with the climate change issues currently facing us. And I just want to thank you and your staff for working on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers is Michael Reagan.
Thank you. To clarify a couple of things, I attended a meeting at the library, and it was a great presentation. Thank you. Clarify one thing, they were quoting the cost of 500 square foot for the residential construction. I think that should be updated to, from what I've been researching, six to 800 square foot along the peninsula, and that's really high, but that's just what it is. Also, the presentation they gave at the library, they showed a pie chart, which basically says that, like, I might be overstating, but between 16, 70% of the air pollution greenhouses comes from automobiles. And until we clean that up, you know, this is a good start, but it's far from getting where we want to be. And then my statement would be, our state has been very aggressive in mandating these improvements, and why are we spending time and money? Can't we just let the state mandates kick in? I do support the environment of improvements, and I believe educating residents about what these improvements will do and the rebates offered is the best solution to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving to our remote environment, our last speaker will be Mike Swire, and our first speaker will be Dashal Leeds.
Hello. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Our chapter strongly supports the four options presented to you tonight. I'd like to focus my comments on supporting the cooling upgrades in options one and two. The absolute best time for households to switch to a heat pump is when they need to replace their air conditioner. These heat pumps come with the added benefit of providing both heating and cooling, negating the necessity to use or replace a gas furnace in the future. These heat pumps are extremely energy efficient, generally three to times more efficient than their other replacement, which helps save energy and reduces monthly energy bills. Heat pumps can use the existing 100 amp panels in the vast majority of cases and use existing ductwork as well. While the upfront cost for a heat pump is approximately 2,000 more than a like-for-like air conditioner, this figure does not take into account the additional savings available to San Mateo residents. As noted in the staff report, San Mateo homeowners are eligible for an additional $1,500 rebate for heat pump systems and an additional $10,000 zero-interest loan from PCE. If homeowners are CARE or FARA customers, they're eligible for an additional PCE rebate of $1,000. And if a homeowner is below 80% median income, they're eligible for PCE's full-service program, which offers no-cost electrification upgrades, including heat pump space heaters. And let's not forget that the high efficiency of heat pumps will save residents money on their monthly energy bills, generating savings of $10,000 over a 30-year period according to the Cost Effectiveness Study. So not including options one and two would burden homeowners with their existing gas furnace, locking them into higher energy bills, and worse, indoor air quality, while slowing San Mateo's progress towards its climate goals. But with options one and two included, significant support is available for low-income building owners to cover their upfront costs for an electric heat pump, resulting in significant cost savings over time, less emissions, and cleaner indoor air quality, and more progress towards the city's climate goals. Options one and two ensure that electrification occurs at the most optimal time during an appliance's life cycle, which is when an air conditioning unit fails. So please direct staff to move forward with all four options. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John McKenna.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is John McKenna, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Menlo Park Environmental Quality Commission. You've heard some excellent comments tonight, and I agree with all of those supportive comments. I urge council to adopt these measures as Menlo Park and many other jurisdictions across the state have done and are doing. These codes are triggered only when a homeowner or building owner has voluntarily chosen to start a project or when replacing existing equipment. Moreover, these codes offer flexibility with multiple pathways to comply. It is also important to note that with a bit of pre-planning and a thoughtful selection of devices, whole-home electrification can be done in most all cases without the need for a main electrical panel upgrade. Lastly, these measures will reduce energy bills, especially as dirty methane gas is abandoned and fewer customers are left to pay to maintain the system. Please adopt all four reach code options. And regarding the FlexPath option, I urge you to set the threshold at 500 square feet with a target score of 30 points. This is a prime opportunity to decarbonize our buildings and make progress on our climate, health, safety, and affordability goals. I truly hope you will choose to adopt these codes and show our children and future generations that we are committed to doing what is needed in the face of the challenges that climate change presents now and going forward. Our communities will benefit from these cost-effective building codes, and they will have an outsized impact beyond the borders of the city of San Mateo. Thank you for your consideration, your service to the city of San Mateo, and for your leadership.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bruce Nagel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this group in regards. I think there's a couple of things that are really important as themes to the presentations we have. First off, these things affect things other than just the climate in terms of the things for people to address, stuff. One is key is asthma. Asthma is particularly noticeable to me because my wife has it. You know, oftentimes she wakes up in the middle of the night coughing severely. So this is something to be considered, and especially affects young children. And so it's something that goes beyond what people would normally think of in regards to the possibilities of addressing climate change. So that's an important issue. The second thing is, is the upgrade, getting the electricity infrastructure put in place before such time as the replacement is required. This is a beautiful thing in regards to the fact that oftentimes the replacement things create a whole issue in regards to getting a... the replacement things create a whole issue in regards to getting a replacement done, having to put in the wiring, et cetera. By addressing that ahead of time, the question that is, is it, it minimizes the amount of time that is going to be needed in order to, to get this thing, get somebody up and running again. And the period of time from the time that something breaks until the time that it's up and running again is often precious to the people that are involved in it. And therefore, by addressing that issue directly, it's, it's important to, to move forward on that. So I look forward to the, the group looking at these things. A wide range of issues that have been raised over the course of the presentations. There are all, many of them affect things that go beyond what things would address for climate change. And so therefore make good business sense. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah.
Hello, my name is Hannah Young and I'm a part of San Mateo High School Sustainability Team. Where I work with other students to promote sustainability and climate resilience in our communities. First, I want to thank the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission for your leadership. San Mateo has built a reputation across California for strong climate action and ambitious reach codes. That's something we should be proud of. As a young person growing up here, I know that the climate crisis isn't a distant issue. It's a quickly approaching future. The choices we make today will shape the world that my generation inherits. That's why I'm here to thank you for your progress on reducing emissions in new buildings and to encourage you to extend that leadership to existing ones. Even though recent court decisions have created new limits, reach codes passed by ordinance remain fair and effective tools. While electrification can have higher upfront costs, it can eliminate up to 10 tons of emissions per, per home each year. With rebates from Peninsula Clean Energy and lower equipment prices, this transition is becoming more affordable for everyone. Heat pumps are a great clean energy option because they're highly efficient, using energy to move heat instead of generating it. This means that they can provide both heating and cooling while using less energy than traditional systems. They reduce greenhouse gas emissions, lower utility bills and work well with renewable power sources like solar. Plus they improve indoor air quality and don't rely on gas combustion, making homes safer and healthier. Electric appliances can be more energy efficient than their gas counterparts, leading to lower monthly energy bills. For instance, heat pumps can be up to three times more efficient than gas furnaces. I strongly support the city's recommendations, especially emphasizing the AC to heat pump conversions, flex path remodel requirements and electric readiness improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mike Swire.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Mayor Newsome, members of the council, Mike Swire. I am urging the council to adopt the position put forward by the San Mateo Climate Action Team, Robert White here and Michelle Hudson and company. They do some great work. They are experts within the peninsula and San Mateo is lucky to have them. I'm really hoping that we can not do the minimum here and really push the envelope. I don't think anyone in the room thinks that we are winning the battle when it comes to climate or when it comes to air pollution. As an asthma sufferer, I know personally that every time we don't do something, it just costs us all a lot more through higher healthcare costs, et cetera. And from a climate perspective, we, as we add more and more cars to the road, something that San Mateo doesn't necessarily have total control of. This is actually one of the few loci of control that, that San Mateo can actually act upon and have an influence when it comes to the global climate crisis. The other nice thing here is that these are solutions that in the long run will likely be profitable. I keep hearing so much about the upfront cost being slightly higher. Please consider the fact that when you install these things, in the long run, you're going to save a lot of money. And these, please don't see these changes as draconian. If anything, you're enabling people to have more choice by creating rules around what cannot, can and cannot be installed. I am a renter. I have no control over what appliances go into my apartment building. My landlord has an incentive to install whatever's cheapest, even if down the road, I'm the one who has to pay more in terms of utility costs. The same thing goes for people that flip houses on the cheap. By setting stricter standards, you get an even playing field and you'll facilitate change. And the long run, everybody will come out ahead through lower costs, through energy savings. So please do everything we can here to really make a dent in the climate control or the climate crisis. And thanks so much.
Thank you. Mayor Newsome, that concludes public comment.
Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll open it up to questions, comments and feedback from the council. Do I have a volunteer to go first? Councilmember Sworko Kadiki.
Thank you, Mayor Newsome. And thank you to the community for coming out because it's great to hear so many people's points of view and, and that there's engagement on this topic. Andrea, I am curious of the community meetings. For example, in District Four, how many people attended?
The Bayside Academy Community Meeting had four people in attendance.
Okay, so it was that meeting. Okay. What are we doing in terms of outreach?
Yeah, I, I kind of explained in the staff report and a little bit verbally how we used our typical online channels to try to engage with the community, including our e-newsletter and social media channels. We did reach out to the Daily Journal and there was an article run about the commission meeting, hopefully generating some interest in the reach codes topic. But we've also posted flyers, physical flyers in all of our rec centers and our libraries to try to engage the community broadly on, on reach codes.
I just, just a comment. I think we need to get just as creative on this topic as we have been with things like bike lanes or housing. Because if we are implementing changes, you know, the community really needs to be aware. And particularly, you know, we have two equity priority areas, District Two and Four. And so I just, I do want to understand how the city will ensure that renters, multifamily residents and historically under-resourced neighborhoods benefit equitably from these policies and are not disproportionately burdened by future retrofit or compliance costs.
Great. And I do want to make clear that multifamily buildings are not impacted at all by the, the reach code options.
Okay, so but for families where they live paycheck to paycheck or are house rich and cash poor, what is the plan?
Yeah, so for the cooling upgrades that would impact single-family duplex and townhomes, I, I just want to highlight and bring back the information about Peninsula Clean Energy and their rebates. So we talked about rebates that are available for anyone for a heat pump. And then if you meet certain income eligibility, you would be able to get extra funding for, if you're a CARE or FARA customer. And in addition to that program, if you meet certain income qualifications, you can get free electrification upgrades.
Yeah, so again, I just think we need to have a really robust marketing strategy to get that information out to the public so that they understand eligibility and thresholds. And then I'd also say, you know, the thresholds being really explicit about, you know, what qualifies for a single income versus double income, you know, multifamily, et cetera. So then just, I know it was mentioned in a public comment, but going back to the Bay Area District rule, you know, how flexible are these reach code options to adapt without requiring another ordinance change?
Yeah, that's a great question. So these reach codes for cooling upgrade requirements and also for flex path really kind of align and complement the air district rules. And so in 2029, the air district will require zero NOx equipment and that will impact all gas furnace replacements. And as the presentation reviewed, when a property owner opts to install an air conditioner, they have two choices. They can install a heat pump or they can install an air conditioner with extra efficiency requirements. So these are really aligning. And so that reach code requirement would be able to be retained even when those air district rules come into play.
And how does that apply with state regulations?
So with state regulations, the, the state code typically changes every three years. And so as with every other code cycle, the, the city and every local jurisdiction with the reach codes has to reevaluate at the code cycle change.
Um, so I want to come back, I want to table option three for a minute. Options one, two and four, I'm in support of. I'd like to understand for option three, you know, how your, your team of one, and then obviously we have the building department. So if we add a flex path, you know, how realistic is it that we're going to be able to achieve that option and meet community demand? Because currently there's community members that feel the permitting process, for example, is not fast enough.
Yeah, so while I am a team of one when it comes to policy development for the reach codes, these reach codes are then taken on and implemented by our community development department that has a team of plan checkers reviewing engagement with project applicants on this topic. And we do have support from TRC and through PCE to, for team training, which we have taken on in the past, as well as like specific meetings as projects and specific reach code issues arise. And for a project applicant, the implementation and enforcement of a reach code is integrated during that plan review. And so it would look something like an additional form to demonstrate flex, flex path compliance.
And what's the average turnaround time, you know, in response to that, like all those documents?
It would be integrated within what is our regular turnaround time.
Okay, so no anticipated delays?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm okay with option three. I, I will say I'd like to revisit this maybe in a year just to make sure that the city's keeping pace as we move closer to align with state regulations too. And I would be comfortable with the 12-point system, somewhere between 800 and 1,000 square feet. That's it. Thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, Andrea and Taylor. And I echo the appreciation for the turnout tonight and a number of public comments for this topic. I did have, I had a question centering on option three, the flex path option. I have a couple, a few questions. I think the first question is, does staff have a recommended point score for the flex path code option?
So what I would recommend that council consider is the availability of cost-effective pathways of each target score. And so as I was going through the different, different target score concepts, I think that's one thing that would be important to consider.
Okay, um, let me, could we maybe take a look at the table with points and so on? Because I did want to dig into that a little bit. You mentioned, for example, that a 12-point score could allow for four pathways. And when you said that, were you saying four cost-effective pathways?
Yes, at least four cost-effective pathways.
I see. And that 18 has three such pathways and 30, does 30 have two?
A score of 30 would just have one cost-effective pathway.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Another question related to this I have is, when we talk about our pathway being cost-effective, can you please explain what, what that means, what the threshold might be?
Yes, the cost effectiveness is defined by the CEC, the California Energy Commission. Their main metric is called LSC, which is a long-term system-wide costs. That looks at the total life cycle of the equipment over 30 years, factoring all of the various societal and equipment benefits and costs. So it is a comprehensive metric, including many different considerations.
So it's, it's not just the, for example, percentage cost increase that we're seeing on this slide?
No, this is exclusively just related to the upfront cost for that 2% cost increase. So that's actually not even considering the savings that could be seen for on-bill costs or on-bill savings.
Okay, that is helpful. And then it's sort of a follow-up question to that would be, from the research you've done, do you, I guess to, to look in on the other side, on the square footage of projects that would be considered for flex path, is there a square footage lower than 1,000 that still had at least one cost-effective pathway?
So for the different square footages, I think that will mainly just impact how many projects are affected, not necessarily the target score. The cost effectiveness will be the same for all of the different square footage values presented.
I see. And I guess that would be based on your answer to the previous question in that we're not just talking about upfront cost when we talk about cost effectiveness. So I, I guess one thing on my mind, for what it's worth for the council, when I was thinking about the square footage I might want to advocate for or, or support, I was thinking frankly, more about the upfront cost increases. But I understand now that there's more to it and I'm going to have to chew on what that means. But that was helpful. Let me see if I have any other questions. I don't think so. So like, I appreciate that offer. No, I'll, I'll try for it. I mean, I, I reserved the right to, to let you know that I messed up or something and want to say something different. But I, I think like councilmembers, Furoko Godizki, I'm going to start with the other options and say that I support all of those, one, two and four. And I do support number three and it's really just a matter of what I think might be the best target. I still find myself interested in the target score of 30. And I have a few reasons for that. First of all, just to zoom out a little on, on a high level points related to this, pardon the term. There would be economic hardship and infeasibility exemptions in this. I, I happened to hear that during the SIC presentation. You know, anything that homeowners have already done in their homes would count toward their score and get full credit. The heat pump pathways, as has been noted, could have extra rebates attached to them to make them even more affordable. And I imagine that would apply both toward the upfront cost and toward the overall cost-effectiveness considerations. And yes, the, you know, there might be only one cost-effective pathway. And other pathways may be more expensive, but the goal of the code is not, in my mind, and feel free to correct me, is, is not necessarily to find as many cost-effective pathways as possible. I, I guess you did give some commentary that suggested that that would be helpful. But I, I do think that the, the primary goal would be to reduce emissions by increasing energy efficiency in a cost-effective way. And so I feel that if you have at least one cost-effective pathway, that is serving the goal. And, uh, you know, we've, in past years, we've had people such as the White Hairs, others who were early adopters of heat pumps. They voluntarily installed heat pumps despite them being more expensive perhaps than other solutions because they preferred it. That was their right and they had the freedom to do that. That was their right and they had the freedom to do that. Now it may be that the heat pump ends up being considered more cost effective. And if others wish to take a different pathway that happens to cost more, that may not be considered as cost effective. This code allows for that and it's okay. And they are free to do that if they prefer. But I'm guessing that most will go for the most affordable, cost effective option. So I, I don't know that there will necessarily be a lot of people who feel that they are, you know, forced to choose between a cost effective option that they don't like and some other option that they would prefer. I imagine most people would end up preferring the affordable, cost effective option. So um, I appreciate your indulging me saying all that about 30. I think that, that puts me in wanting to support 30, but I'm open to hearing from other council members on that. And then on the square footage, I um, would, would be inclined to say at least 1,030 is, is basically where I'm at. And then, um, and then I could see going, I could see going lower. Because if, if at lower square footage, we still have a cost effective pathway, then I, then we, we haven't necessarily, you know, there, there might be an increase in the percentage of upfront cost. That's kind of what was giving me pause earlier. And so that I think I might, you know, I might have to go get a calculator in the back later and, and think about. Because, you know, we have rebates that we can consider and I wouldn't want us to go so low as to increase the upfront cost. I guess too significantly, even if it were still considered cost effective. I'm not sure what that threshold is. Could I see the slide again? Cause I think what, I think actually the math's not that hard. Um, thank you. Uh, let's see. Yeah. Because we're looking at 1,000 square feet here. So when we think about a 2% cost increase in compliance path one with heat pump, although maybe could we look at the 30 square feet? Thank you. So yeah, here we have a 4% cost increase at 1,000 square feet. And so if we were to, you know, change the square footage to 500 square feet, let me try to make this a question, just to make sure I'm not getting it wrong. It might effectively double the percentage cost, upfront cost increase, right? Because we're talking about the, the compliance cost, uh, sort of divided by the total expected cost of the renovation?
Yes. Yeah. So we'd be saying, estimating that the 500 square foot project would be half that current example project and putting that total compliance cost over that number.
Thank you. Um, but it's still cost effective. Um, so, all right. I, I think I'll, I'll say that I'm open to, to going lower than 1,000. Maybe allow for other council members to weigh in and see where they land. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm for one, two, and four, and then 800 to 1,200 square feet. Thank you.
Let me think about that.
There we go. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the community members here and virtually who, uh, who participated. A couple of just additional questions. Basic education, Andrea, for me and for the community. If I install a heat pump for air conditioning, it is also true that that heat pump can be used when, let's say in two years, my gas furnace gives out. And that, so I've already done most of the work.
Yeah. A heat pump provides both space heating and space cooling functions. So it can essentially replace your gas furnace.
Right. Super. And because of that, you have on your chart the term space conditioner, which I had never seen before. So that's sort of the combination, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. It's sometimes referred to just as a heat pump, sometimes heat pump space conditioner, heat pump HVAC. Those are all pointed towards the same piece of equipment.
Great. Made me think of rockets in space, but that's a great term. So we need to get that out. Did you have an opportunity to talk to developers about option two or landlords about this option?
Yeah. The engagement focused on HVAC contractors who would be implementing our cooling upgrades reach code as well as reaching out to various general contractors, engineers and architects. I, I reached out via email and I did not hear responses on that later group, but I did kind of share out what I heard from HVAC contractors.
But that didn't include developers or landlords who would be directly impacted by this cost.
Well, the, as these reach codes are related to project, per specific project improvement opportunities like AC installation or major home renovations, targeting developers was not necessarily the priority.
Let's say a landlord.
Yeah. And that, that would have been targeted through our general broad community outreach as this was broadly advertised.
Great. So I was just interested because if this is a, a new area, it would be great to get more feedback. So I would just encourage you in terms of community education to specifically seek out landlords, specifically smaller landlords who were, this might make more of an impact on. Then do we have a city standard for what economic hardship or technical infeasibility means across all of our reach codes?
Do not believe we have a city standard for that. Maybe you can share a little bit about.
Or is that just not appropriate?
Well, so in technical infeasibility and economic hardship would be defined in the ordinance. And I'll turn it to Taylor to talk a little bit more about that.
Thank you. Yeah. So for the flex path specifically, there is an economic hardship option. That's because there's so many different renovation projects that can go on. We just want to account for the situations that maybe aren't top of mind. So the current model ordinance language has a 20% cost exemption. So earlier we were talking about 2%, 4%. If that number reached 20%, that's where the exception currently would apply.
Great. Thank you. Um, and do, is it too, too early? Or is there feedback that the other cities who have adopted these reach codes?
It's too early of, well, except for flex path. There are some cities in the Bay Area that have had years of flex path experience. And so that seems to have gone over well as they continue to readopt that ordinance in their community for the cooling upgrade requirements that have been adopted by various cities that wouldn't go into effect until the next code cycle.
Okay. Great. I would just encourage you, as you already do with everything else, to continue to reach out to other cities and understand what their experience has been, good and bad. So as we move forward, we can continue to improve. So I support all four of the, the options, one, two, three, and four. And specifically in terms of flex path, I would support 1,000 square feet and 12. And I know some of our speakers wanted a more aggressive beginning. And I know one of our council members was potentially interested in that. But I think this is already good. A flex path is going to be really complicated to understand. But it's also an opportunity to really bring our community along. Because in number of the other reach codes, there have been real cost issues associated with them or people thinking the cost was going to be X and it wound up being X plus 50%, which is what I hear a lot of. But I think in this situation, we can show them that this is a great opportunity and it is something that is cost effective without getting too in the weeds about it. So that's why I would say, let's start with something that we can sell easily or more easily. And then as council member Shurko Goditsky said, let's go back at an appropriate time. If it's a year, if it's 18 months, whatever is appropriate, let's go back and really look at what has happened. And then we've, as you also mentioned, we have to really get more creative about our community outreach. Because I know you worked really hard on getting people to come to these sessions and a number of us promoted it and we didn't get a lot of response. And that's, I know you're disappointed about that too, but we're going to need to, if we're going to get people to not go, oh my God, what's happening when they're, they're suddenly told about the requirement. So I'd really encourage you to contact Sustainable San Mateo County, I would think would be a great resource for how have other places done it? So go into their ideas bank. But thank you very much for that and I'm supportive.
If you want to, okay, I'll go and then we'll circle back to Nicole. All right. I'm going to start out with one, two, and four because those are easier and we're down to 12 minutes. So on option one, uh, one question or more of an observation, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, but I'll put it out there, is I've observed in my district, many people put air conditioners and I don't think they're heat pumps yet. Hopefully we'll get there. But they put them in the space between the, the home and the fence and the property line. And when I'm looking at it, I don't think that that's actually to code to be that close to property line. So can we look at, you know, maybe having an exemption for code? Or, or what is your experience on this? Because um, obviously we want people to put these in and we want them to be able to put them in right. But if you're limited to only having it in your backyard or, and I'm assuming we can't do it in the front yard, probably because of visibility ordinance. So um, just an open question about that. And do you know, do you have any feedback on it?
I know heat pumps and air conditioning units do need to be sited outside and our team is used to reviewing them with project applicants and ensuring that their sighting is meeting the city standards.
Right. And what I suspect though, is that when people put in these air conditioners, they might not be, you know, doing it to code. They might just be installing them. And so I think I'm, I'm supporting one. I just want to make sure that we do put a pin in it and recycle, circle back to making sure that if people are doing that, that we're finding, finding the optimal way for them to do it.
So mayor, real quick, just jumping in, typically where you're seeing those condensers, they're not getting permits from the city. Um, so that's a little bit tougher for city staff to go ahead and enforce those codes. But you know, it's something we can look out for and talk to our building staff. But yeah, in order to capture that, it's going to be really hard unless a neighbor cites another neighbor.
I'm not talking about going out and finding the existing ones. I'm talking about when we have people coming forward to do a new project, you know, they want to give them, want to give them options. And if that means like lightening the restriction and saying, you know what? You can put a pad within a foot of your fence line.
To allow it.
Yep. Does that make sense?
No, for sure. There's just ingress, egress and width and all that stuff. So.
Right. Thank you for sure. Okay. Um, option two. Mr. Whitehair, community member Whitehair, mentioned 20 ton. And I, I'm hard, hard to understand. What, what is he talking about? Like what is, what is, what is it we're proposing as far as tonnage of, of building? And then what, so what does that look like?
Yes. So there are current requirements in the state code that cover zero to five tons for these units. And then he's saying up to 20 tons, just like the, the sizing of the unit, because that is what the cost effectiveness studies covered. So that's like the full range of the equipment. That is the vast majority of the equipment as well.
So is our option two going up to 20 pounds or 20 tons? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And then on four, if someone does a project, does the wiring need to be hot? And what I mean by that is if I, if I do a remodel of a bathroom and a bedroom and I tear out all the walls and I redo everything, do, if I don't have enough electrical power to replace, for example, maybe that's not a good example, but my kitchen would be another example. If I, if I put in the wiring so that I can put in electric stove, do I have to physically make the stove be hot? Or do I just have the wiring up to the panel and not have to activate it?
So how we currently have it written leaves it a little bit flexible in terms of what kind of outlet you have. But you would either have a 120 volt outlet there. So yes, hot. Or a 240, that would be up to you either would be appropriate.
I'm just, I guess what I'm asking is if I don't have enough panel capacity to do that, you know, can I, can I wire it, have it ready to go and just have it capped off? And then when I, when I come back, you know, on the next project to increase the power panel, because as we go electric, I'm at some point going to have to upgrade the panel. But you know, upgrading the panel service is, is about a $14,000 project. And you know, that might make it unreachable for me to do my kitchen remodel. So what I'm asking is, is it, it sounds like the way it's written or thought through right now is that it would be presumed to be hot. And I'm wondering if it's possible to, to have that exception be, hey, it's wired and ready to go. But you know, whenever the panel of service is upgraded, you plug it in.
The exception right now is for if the requirements would trigger a panel upgrade or a service upgrade, then you would not have to comply. So there's an exception for that situation.
Okay. Good. All right. Now coming back to three. So if I haven't said it already, I am in support of one, two, and four. Coming back to three, um, can we pull up the grid, please? So when we look at this, and I look at my district, you know, most of the homes in my district are between 1,200 and 1,400 square feet. If we wanted to put a second level on the house, uh, which only included maybe a bathroom, is it feasible that I can get to the number 18 or the number 12 or the number 30? And a couple of things. One, do these numbers only apply to the new build? Meaning if I've, I can't insulate my floors on the ground floor because I'm on a cement slab. So if I insulate, when I have the second floor, I get five points? Or how does that work?
So the measures apply to the whole home. I will say there are exemptions for each of these measures. So if the measure doesn't apply, or you already have something in place that, that can be covered too. So if your attic space is too small and you physically can't get that amount of insulation in, that's an exception for that measure.
Yeah. And so to go another route, same, same vein though, I had a second floor, but I don't, I can't get to all of the attic. As long as the new build has had the attic, I get the attic credit, regardless of the fact that the other third of my house, which I can't get to the attic is not.
Yes, I believe that would be constituted under the technical infeasibility portion. The intention though is the measures would apply to the whole home where possible. And then there's exceptions where it's particularly difficult.
Okay. I think that wraps up my thoughts on that. Um, and we're running out of time. So I support, I, I support this. Um, I am in agreement with council member Diaz Nash with, I would like to start at 1,012. Uh, I know that that's not ideal with what some people are asking, but I would like to start there and then revisit it in a year and see how we're doing. And if it's, if it's going well, we can maybe get more aggressive. And if it's not, we can just leave it as is. So that's my guess.
So would you like me to speak to the direction that we just received?
Yeah. Do you want to recap direction?
So basically I've heard a majority of council saying that, so supporting all four, one, two, three, and four. For option three, we're looking at 1,000 square feet. I saw a majority of council support 1,000 square feet and then 12 points. And I see nodding heads. And then, okay, to revisit in a year, we can provide an update, council written update. And if needed, revisit that. Does that sound good? Okay. I see unanimous nodding heads. We have our direction. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for a great presentation. And with that, we will close this special session.